Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 15, 2022, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park zoning board of adjustments. Chairman, would you like to call the meeting to order?
Sure. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are in file with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone to please mute their cell phones for the duration of the meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please call us, call the roll for us, Marie.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
John Scully.
Here.
Russell Lewis is absent, and Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, so we just have a couple of housekeeping issues. First, I'd like to welcome Jose Alcaraz, our newest member. Congratulations on your appointment, Jose. And good luck, and I hope you enjoy this. So I guess we'll just do the swearing in first.
Sure. And Mr. Alcaraz, if you could just repeat after me.
Yes.
I.
Hi.
State your name.
Jose Alcaraz.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Solemnly swear that I.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established.
To the, can you repeat?
Yes, sir. And to, to the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the zoning board alternate.
Of the zoning board alternate.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So as Jose stated, he will be alternate number one.
Okay. So confirmed. Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz, and welcome.
So one final housekeeping issue. If I could get a motion for the resolution of 412 Second Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
Marie?
And on this one, the members that are able to vote are Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
And Chairman Christopher Avalon.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we can proceed with the applications now, and the first one up is 1205 Pine. Mr. Rycheck, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's late, so.
So maybe you can give us a little recap. It's been a while since we've seen you and the Barnettes.
Yes, 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 and I do apologize for any outbursts in the list. Hearing, and we're here, we made all changes and all the questions. Basically, there were three variances that we're requesting. It's a single-family house on 1205 R1, single-family residential district, and we're rehating a house that was built 1910, 1920. Past testimony, the foundations of the front stoop and the rear addition, that was put out many, many years ago, were insufficient foundations and footings. So the proposed change is to bump up the house, but it won't require some variances. It is a regular-shaped lot. The house is situated central to the lot, like most of the historical development back in the 1920s, 1930s in that area. And the variances we're requesting in the zone are a minimum side yard setback required of six foot, existing is eight foot, proposed is four foot. Combined side yard setback of 14 feet is required, existing is 27 feet, proposed is 12. And the other is maximum building coverage of 30% is required, existing is 17, proposed is 37.7. And as the board will recall, this is a project that's gone through some permutations based upon the professionals' input from Asbury Park, which we welcome, and we made those changes. One of the majors was to make this house, rear yard setback with symmetry of the house next door, and we have Mr. Dennis Roberts here. He's not only a professional who's going to testify in one year, but he's also a fact witness that owns the sister house.
All right, so let's back up a little bit first, Mr. Rycheck.
Right.
My understanding is you've made some considerable changes. Maybe you can tell us first what changes you did to the previous designs that you had. My understanding is that you've eliminated some of the major variances. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we moved the house back about five or 10 feet backwards. We now match the side yard setback that's required of even the sister house next to us.
No.
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 That's the one.
Yeah, front yard setback, front yard setback. I overspoke, I apologize.
And just for a quick comment, too, do you want to re-swear everybody on the board professional side? I mean, they are continued under oath, but I could just re-swear.
Yes, please, please swear, and Donna and Jason.
All right. Do you swear from the testimony about the give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you just state for your record, name for your record, please?
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitch, our board engineer.
Thank you both.
All right, please proceed, Mr. Rycheck.
Right, so we have changed architectural firms. We have the, I hope I pronounced this right, the Rockham firms. We have Dennis Roberts here and Sal LaFerita, who's going to testify, and they'll be sworn in and they'll provide their credentials, who redid the plans to match what the township professionals requested.
Maybe you can provide your credentials to us.
Sure, you want me to swear?
Do you swear from the testimony about the give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you say your name, spelling your last, please?
Dennis Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I'm the owner and president of Rockham Contracting. I've been in business for over 36 years as a general contractor licensed in not only New Jersey, but all states as well. I've done a significant amount of work in the town, obviously in surrounding towns. I'm also a resident at Asbury Park, so this is very important to me, to restore homes like this and bring them back to, you know, what I consider their glory. I do, for full disclosure, I do own and renovate and completely renovate the house to the north of this subject property, 1207 Pine, and I think that we tried to incorporate, you know, our team and myself tried to incorporate some of the things that we did there on that property, as well as some addressing all of your previous issues that have come up in the previous meetings that have been presented to you. So I feel that we have addressed all of those issues, and hopefully the design will.
Are you saying you did the design, Mr. Roberts, as an architectural?
No, sir, I am not a licensed architect.
Okay.
I'm a general contractor.
So you're the contractor.
My team, because we did, we were hired by the Barnettes to come redo the design, redo the construction.
You keep saying redo the design. What do you mean by that?
Well, bring the elements in that have been discussed previously, as well as our own flavor to the project.
I see. Okay. But not from an architectural perspective?
Oh, sure, absolutely. You have revised drawings, which we have submitted in your possession.
Yes, I understand, but you're the contractor, not the architect.
That's correct.
Okay.
But this is what I do for a living. I bring design elements, I have my own ideas, and I bring my team onto a project, and we do design, the construction side, the whole thing.
Okay, okay. So are we going to see designs first?
Well, I believe, certainly, in your possession, you have the drawings that have been submitted.
Well, that's true, but we would like to talk about what changes have been made on the drawings.
That's what I'm here to discuss with you right now.
Well, normally the architect does that, sir.
Yeah, but we have the architect here. Mr. LaFerita is the architect.
Sure, we could do that.
Well, I'm just telling you, standardly, that's how we approach it.
Okay, we'll have Mr. LaFerita.
Okay.
Would you give your credentials and your, you know, from the board?
Do you swear from the testimony about the give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you state your name for the record, please?
Salvatore LaFerita, L-A, capital F as in Frank, E-R-L-I-T-A.
Thank you, and if you may, just give your credentials to the board, who qualifies.
I'm a licensed architect in both New York and New Jersey for over 30 years, doing quite a bit of residential work over the last 20 years in most of Monmouth County.
And I'm sorry, what schooling did you have? If you could just.
I'm sorry?
Did you indicate schooling and things along those lines?
Oh, City College in New York.
Okay.
The City College.
And you appeared before boards of this matter in the past?
Yes, not particularly this one in Asbury Park, but several.
Several of the boards, okay. And offering as an expert in the field of.
We accept his credentials. Please proceed, Mr. LaFerita.
Sit.
Please.
Yeah, if you may, the board wanted to know what upgrades or what changes were made from the last plans we planned that you were involved in.
So one of the most significant changes I believe we made was we took the advice of the previous meeting and comments, and we shifted the addition to the, I don't know if it's that, we shifted it back five feet from the cubed building. That would be the garage and supporting the unit, so that would be the garage. So we shifted that back five feet and still maintain the rear yard setback, which means the zone will be completed. That was one of the biggest, I would say, deployments that was coming out of the last set of, you know, reports. Other than that, we identified many more of the exterior features of the house, siding, where the shingles are, roof, versus metal, it doesn't allow any metal standing scene roofs. Popped out a dormer over the master bedroom, which I don't believe is on the previous set of plans, and just made some minor, minor interior changes. The porch is now being brought back to its original, you know, and we did pop out the front wall just slightly so that we could still have a decent front entry and not mess around with this beautiful staircase that this house currently has.
So if I understand correctly now, you're reopening the front porch, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're not changing the setback of the front yard?
No.
Okay. I'm just clarifying, for the board and for everybody.
Yeah, we're bringing back the covered porch, we're shifting the entry door slightly to the right, but we're also keeping it a bit forward than where it was before, so we can maintain that, like, monies there. Other than that, the kitchen area and the office in the back just basically is very, much the same as it was before, on the previous plans, just with that shift on the right side. A back porch leading to the patio and west of the yard, which also is within, I believe, the rear setback appointments. We also, one of the most significant changes, I think, was it was a comment about the roof heights and how the gambrel beams were not meeting each other, so we brought that back to the, we made the challenge mark on the side of the gambrel, so now we can see that front gambrel, which two edges are exactly the same. I think that was a significant change. That's about it, I think, right now. There's some landscaping, trees noted on the plan, and I noticed was a criteria that was being asked for previously. The driveway does not change at all, the walkway does not change at all, it just needs to shift at the top to meet the new steps up to the porch, but it's exactly the same driveway and main part of the walkway. So what to think of right now, any questions, or glad to answer.
So what are the significant variances you're asking for right now?
So I think the three most significant are the side setback, the mass coverage, and the overall.
Combined side yard.
Combined side yard.
One side yard, the combined side yard, so that's two. And the nice coverage is 7%, over which is allowed, 30% of that, and the full side side. And 7% of this square foot number is not a lot, in my opinion, but those are the major three. Actually, the only.
From my perspective, you've eliminated a lot of the problem areas that we found with the previous designs.
I see a lot of yeses in the checkbox. I was happy to see them. Let's not review them too closely. I think the score is 7.3. Yes, it's 100. There are many variances.
I don't have a lot of questions. Based on what I've seen, you've eliminated a lot of my issues, so I personally think, I thank the Barnettes for making these significant changes, and to me, it is a much easier application.
So I do have a question. With the water runoff, where's the water going from the addition of the garage? How are we capturing that to stay away from the neighbors since it's a four-foot?
Right. The last time we were here, I believe the board engineer said if we were under a thousand square foot addition, that we would need it, but we're willing to put a recharge basin in and tie, have the leaders tied into that. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm just more concerned that it's just not directed right to the neighbor. However you might direct it away from them is what I'm asking for.
Yes, the leaders are coming down in such a manner to keep it on the property, not necessarily going to any adjacent property.
Like down the driveway?
Yes, we've noted that on there, and it would be very.
In the front and the back, or is there just one meter?
No, it would be front and rear, and it would stay on the property.
Thank you.
More floor corners, it's not more.
The garage is now, also now set back to the ordinance requirement of, I think it's five feet, so.
Five feet from the, from the house, unfortunately.
Right.
It's literally about 15, 13 feet of non-coverage.
Excuse me, what surface would the driveway be?
It's existing, it's concrete.
So you're not changing anything?
Not touching the driveway.
Not touching, okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one. Just in this report, you've mentioned the trees. You don't, you're not proposing any street trees. Do you plan on contributing to the city for one?
We are.
Okay.
We plan.
Oh, you're planning a street tree? Oh, good.
And you'll, you'll talk to the environmental shade tree and make sure it's conforming to, thank you.
They have a list of trees, the environment, and we don't really do that. We don't recommend what type of tree to put it.
I will speak to Tom.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Board professionals, do you have any questions? All right, I'll open it up to the public for the architect and the contractor, if anyone has any questions regarding his testimony, their testimony. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to, do you have any other witnesses to provide us with, Mr. Rycheck, or are you complete?
We're complete.
Okay, do you want to make any final comments?
Well, it's been a project not without tears, but we've enjoyed our time with the board, and we've learned a lot, and we've felt that it's as fully conforming as can be prepared, you know, with the guidance of the board professionals and the board itself.
Thank you, Mr. Rycheck. So I do have to open it up for public comment for this application before we deliberate. Anyone in the public have anything either for or against this application? You get four minutes. Seeing nobody in the public, we'll close public comment. And so now we get to deliberate. Anybody want to make any comments from the board in regards to the application?
I'll start. I just want to thank you guys for the number of changes and considerations and hearing what the board and the professionals have to say, so I thank you for that, and I'm sorry it dragged on so long, but we appreciate your tolerances and understanding where we're coming from.
And I will echo the same comments. Mr. and Mrs. Barnett, I know this was a difficult application for you both. I'm sorry that it was a little dramatic sometimes. I thank you for the, for the changes you've made. It was a significant change that gives us the ability to go ahead with this application.
Yeah, I do, I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members, and I thank you for continuing with the process. I think in the end, the result is something that fits in the neighborhood, and will make the neighborhood a better place, so thank you.
And I would like to say thank you as well. I agree with my colleagues with all the changes and the process.
I also, and I think that the design work that you've done is really lovely. I mean, I think that it's going to be a very livable space for you, and you met the concerns of the board, addressed the constraints of the property and the street. Thank you for that, but I think it's, it really is a lovely design unit.
And I congratulate you on cooperating and working with us, okay? Sometimes it's difficult, but necessary, okay, when we're talking about the footprint of a neighborhood. And thank you for realizing that you want to keep the neighborhood the same way, but also beautifying it by fixing the house up, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
So if there are no further comments, I'll make a motion to approve the Barnett's Pine Street application, 1205 Pine.
I'll second.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
John Scully.
Yes.
And Chairman Christopher Avalon.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Barnett.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care, everyone, thank you.
Review the resolution or?
The resolution will take a few weeks.
I understand.
So once the resolution is done, Chris, I don't know, like, I'm not going to speak for you, so.
I got it done quick on this one, so it's just pretty straightforward, I don't want to speak in person, so I'll get it over and through, create a draft as well, and take a look at it.
That would, that would be fine.
Okay.
And then it'll be read in the next year.
The resolution doesn't have to be read, it just has to be approved and voted on.
Of course, yeah.
So once we get that from Mr. Beekman, we will then have our chance to review it to make sure it has all of our comments or.
Right, right.
And then it has to be voted on in the next time here.
Right, that's right.
Signing starts to follow.
Right, right. Publish it, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
We don't need to do anything, you just put it back on the docket, you just do that.
We just do it. You don't need to do anything, Mrs. Barnett. We take care of the rest.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Take care.
I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Motion, uh, second. Five-minute recess?
Say all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I will now take roll call. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Jose Alcaraz.
Here.
John Scully.
Here.
Russell Lewis is absent, and Chairman Avalon.
Here. All right, the second application up is 1201 First Avenue, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Williams, and Mr. Fox.
Mr. Chairman, I've read the notices, and they're in good form. We have jurisdiction to proceed.
And thank you, Mr. Serpico.
You are welcome.
All right, so this application has some issues with it, Mr. Fox.
Sorry to hear that, but I'm here to try to deal with issues.
Well, let's see, let's start.
I understand we may have an issue with waivers.
We do, yes, yes, that is going to be the second topic, but the first will be your letter.
Yes, I was going to ask you about that.
Which one is that?
In the packet, you had outlined that you were going to go before city council.
Yes.
And get an easement?
Yes.
Can you update us as to where you are with that?
So the city council has adopted a resolution, I believe, approving an easement.
That's not my understanding, Mr. Fox, so there's no adoption of any resolution at this point.
I'll help, I'll supplement. Okay, so here's my understanding, okay, from Fred Raffetto, who is the city attorney.
Okay.
That the city has approved granting an easement to the property for the retaining walls on Pine Street and on First Avenue. They will not give us an easement, and they're in the right of way. So you wouldn't have jurisdiction over those anyway. So that's purely the city. Anything in the right of way is beyond your jurisdiction. That's why we went to the city. So they have approved.
So you have gone to the council?
Of course, absolutely, 100%. And in fact, I've been told that the council approved it, we have provided them with a survey showing exactly what the easement is going to be. We've provided them with a description from our surveyor of exactly what the easement should read. There is a dispute because the city doesn't believe that we've included enough of the property in the easement, and they think my surveyor hasn't included enough in the description, and I've sent it back now to the surveyor twice to say, have you messed up or not?
It's Samont, right?
Yeah, it's Samonti.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, and so, and he's now told me twice, no, I'm right. Everything that I've given you in the plan and in the description is the retaining walls in the right of way, and so, and the city says, I don't know that I agree with you, and my position is, I'm not a surveyor. So I don't know, I don't know how we get through this, but it's really between me and the city attorney as to where that goes, but it's sitting there. My last response was, Samonti said, everything that you've agreed to, which is both retaining walls within the right of way, you're going to give me an easement for. But I don't have the actual easement, but I've been told by Fred Raffetto, who I think is the city attorney.
He is.
That the city has agreed, which is why I've gone through the process of giving them a de-description for those walls.
I spoke, I spoke to Fred this afternoon. He said that the council is willing to go forward with the two encroachments for the two retaining walls. The fences.
Has there been a formal vote on that?
Well, not, I don't know that. He didn't say that. He said it also has to be done by ordinance, so there has to be a public hearing, and you never know what could happen.
So then there has been no vote.
At a public hearing, but the council has said, yes, let's move forward, we're okay with this, and who knows what's going to happen when the public pipes up, you know, God only knows what happens then. But, and the fence is a no-no, this fence is not going to be approved.
Right.
And Mr. Fox recognizes that.
Yeah, the board, but this board, that's not.
Right, that's not within our bailiwick. We can't talk right away.
Yeah, we didn't notice that. We didn't notice it, but, so whatever happens, the board, if the board, if the city says we can't do it, then we have to tear it up. But of course, these retaining walls, I think the whole point of them doing it is they were there before we bought.
Not all of them, though.
We were, yeah, we replaced, they were all there, but we replaced some of them that were, that were falling down. So we didn't build any new ones. They were all in the same location that they were there before.
But you removed it and rebuilt it.
It was falling down, and so we removed that retaining wall that was falling down, and then we rebuilt it.
Okay, well, that's for proofs.
That's the city, it's not.
Yeah, that'll be when the case is presented. So that's where we're at there.
Okay, so we're going to have to.
That's issue one?
That's issue one.
Okay.
We can't really talk about the fences and can't talk about on those retaining walls.
We've not asked you to approve them.
So then we'll move on to your team.
There's other fences.
There are other fences. Yes, there's many fences. But in terms of what happens with that, since they've said no fence, we're going to need to see where you're going to put the new fences. And we're going to see the design of those fences.
I think we're tearing the old ones down.
No, no, I'm talking about the ones on the retaining walls. You can't have the fence on the retaining walls.
We have to take it down.
Yeah, but are you going to try and put another fence up in place of that fence? And if so, what's the height? And if it needs a variance, we've got to see the design.
And then where is it sitting on the property?
Yeah, and where is.
And we need to know the setbacks and all of that.
We have not applied for that, but it's a fair, it's a fair question. I don't know that we're going to replace it. But if there's other issues, then let's talk about.
Well, you've asked for certain waivers. What waivers have you asked for?
The fences that are not in the right of way, that are on the property other than in the right of way.
No, no, not, no, there is not.
Oh, the design waivers?
Design waivers. The sections.
Just so you know, so we got a letter back, a completeness letter, that said you're incomplete as these items. I then sent a letter back in asking for waivers. And then I received a response back saying that the board has decided to grant the waivers, so.
No, 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 we never granted any waivers.
I understand that hasn't happened. So this is, you know, so I don't, so we've asked for waivers. I don't even have the, I just heard this five minutes ago. So do you have, does somebody here have a list? I can probably dig out of my file the waivers that were asked for that I was told were granted, but I don't have them.
There's no one that could grant them out of them in the board.
I'm just telling you what happened. I understand what you're saying, okay? I was told that the board granted the waivers. Many boards don't require an applicant to come in on waiver requests. They grant them, okay, without the applicant being there.
But to me, this is an incomplete application.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. But you understand that I got a transmittal saying that the waivers are granted.
I can't help you with what you received. Do you have something that shows that?
I think, before we go there.
Are you saying that I'm telling you something that's not true?
No.
No, I'm not.
We're just, we're actually curious.
So I've been doing this for 47 years. So I don't mess around with that to the board, okay? So I'm telling you what happened. It's truthful. So, you know, I understand that the board doesn't, you know, that maybe you didn't do it, but somebody, why would I notice for a public hearing?
Well, I think.
If we weren't told the waivers are granted.
I think with the, with what is needed, I think the prudent thing to do is to punt. I think the prudent thing to do, we've got, still have plenty of time. Move it along to another date.
I'll be happy to send you in all the stuff.
Fill in the gaps, whatever the waivers there were that were requested as opposed to the design exceptions that have to be heard by the board. Get them in, and then we can, and if there's an amended plan that has to be submitted, and if your clients are seeking additional fencing, throw it all in and come back, and we'll hear the case.
Let me ask you, do we need to show up at another meeting?
Of course.
No, no, we haven't finished. You already said, go ahead.
So I know I'm old and slow, but do we need to show up at the next meeting in order to address the waivers that your completeness letter set forth?
If you're going to ask for the waivers.
We are, we are, we have.
Then you're going to have to show up, and you're going to have to address them.
So I sent a letter in asking for waivers. We're happy to show up at the next meeting, or we can sit here and try to dig that letter out and address them tonight. I don't care. We'll come to the next meeting. We're happy to do that. So we already have an incompleteness letter with listed waivers.
Okay.
We then sent a letter in asking for those waivers. That's what will be in the board file. And the reason that we're here is somebody said to us, the board granted them, and said, we're going to put you down for a public hearing. They gave us this date. We got our certified listed property husband 200 feet. We noticed them. We noticed in the newspaper. That's why we're here tonight to substantively put the application in. If you didn't grant the waivers, then that's a miscommunication. I'm happy to go back and redo that. I just want to know, at the next meeting, what am I doing?
Well, I don't have the list of waivers that you've grasped for. Do you have them? Can you find it? Or can anybody find it? Marie, can you find it?
I just scrolled through the whole file. I don't.
And I can tell you, Mr. Fox, we don't do anything without sitting up here. You know, so I'm sorry if that was relayed to you in some fashion.
There's an email that says that.
Yeah.
So do you have the completeness letter?
I'm scrolling through everything.
I don't think we should sit here and try and dig through files.
I've got two files. I've got Fred Raffetto's issues, I've got your issues.
I'm going to be here a long time trying to figure that out, just to figure the thing out. I think the smarter thing to do is to move it along to another date, get the information in for us. And at the very beginning of the hearing, if need be, we'll address these requests. If you look through the file, and there's a couple of innocuous ones that you can get. For example, you're missing.
I think they're all innocuous, but obviously that's what they want to do.
And if you want to, if you want to go with an additional fence, design it. If there's no variance, that's fine. But if there's going to be a variance application amended, bring it all in, and one fell swoop and be done with it.
Can we talk, and we're happy to do that. So can I communicate with you or the board secretary as to whether or not we're going to come for the waivers? Because obviously, if you don't grant the waivers, I'm going to have to then.
Bring it in.
Submit additional information to satisfy the completeness.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Fox is asking if he can communicate with us because if the waivers are not going to be granted, he does have to, he has to know that and bring in the information that you're looking for. If the waivers are going to be granted, then of course, he wouldn't bring that information in. And he has to be prepared either way to present the case, so.
Well, how would I know whether they were going to be granted or not?
Because we don't have the list, so we're all talking about what, we don't know.
So I can represent to you that there is a, there are items that we did not submit that we asked for waivers on. And so that's someplace I can send that. So if I need to come to a meeting of the board.
Yes.
In order to get through that.
Yes.
Then, you know, I've already noticed, you know, let's reschedule it for another meeting. I will come. I don't, I don't need to have my clients here wasting time on completeness items.
Sure.
We'll deal with that. Then you can make your decision on those items we didn't submit.
Okay.
And then we'll, if there are none, then we can schedule for another meeting.
Right.
If there are some, then we'll have to submit and complete and schedule it, and then see, and then we're going to have to wait to have you tell me that it is complete, right?
Well, essentially, yes, essentially.
You're right.
25 days after I submit the additional information to tell me if it is complete, at which point in time we'll schedule for a substantive hearing. But we do need to carry it, make sure that we carry it.
Yeah, for daytime and place certain. And in the interim, you'll get the council to move on that, so we'll know where we stand with the two firms.
Can I respectfully raise one other issue?
Sure.
So there is a question about the compressor units for our HVAC system.
I understand. Yes, that's one of the variances requested.
So those units have been in since 2019. There was a total rehab done of the house in 2019. Mr. Lutz was the gentleman that did that.
Okay.
He came down to the construction official with complete plans, plumbing, electrical, building. I have the permits here for all of that.
Yes.
There's no zoning determination. So apparently, the construction official must not have done what he should have done, which is send it over to the zoning officer to get the zoning permit. But we relied on that, those permits to build it and put the units where they are. So I think there's a pretty good legal argument that we don't need a variance for that because of the town.
That's not up to me.
No, I would send the documentation to me. It's an issue for the board to consider.
Yeah.
He's arguing, he's going to argue in a stopple theory that the construction official, acting in his or her capacity, assuming the proof's back up, what Mr. Fox is saying, that issued the permit and that they relied to their detriment on the permit, built the, did the building, and no zoning permit. And the town should be stopped from denying the location of that. But that's something that will be developed and vetted completely between now and the hearing day and on the hearing day.
And that's different from the fence argument because our.
Oh, I understand.
The fence guy, who's a local guy in town.
We get the picture. We know.
You know.
We understand.
Mr. Cappio. We hired him and paid him about 25 grand?
Yep.
To do his work.
I understand.
He didn't, he didn't come and get a permit at all.
No, no, we understand.
We know the history.
We get the background. Yeah, so why don't we?
I'm trying to keep this not expensive for my clients because they're already going to have to do something, no matter what you do.
I appreciate that, Mr. Fox, but you must appreciate our situation.
I understand. I'm not complaining. I'm just explaining and trying to look.
Mr. Fox was, I don't know if he still is, he was a board attorney. He knows. He knows.
For 20 years.
What made you give it up?
Politics.
Seabright, you're a Seabright.
Seabright, 20 years. He had a combined zoning planning board like this.
No, no, we're not combined. No, no, we have a separate planning board.
Highlands, when I used to have Highlands, we had both, a joint board.
You're too big, yeah, you guys.
We're too big, oh.
You're too big.
Asbury in the 26 or 27 years, whatever it is I've been here, has certainly changed with the zoning board.
So my grandparents owned a bar and grill, not, this is not for the application.
Okay.
And I'm not doing it. So my grandparents owned a bar and grill on First and Ocean Avenue.
First and Ocean Avenue.
Called the Colonial Cafe.
Yeah.
My grandparents. And it's now the outdoor stage for the Stone Pony.
Yeah, yeah.
In 1967, I was running the parking lot behind my grandparents' bar and grill where it used to be Mrs. Jay's, if anybody.
Listen, I know Gary since freshman year of high school. You went to Asbury first. You went to Asbury first.
That's a great place. I go here for dinner all the time.
There you go.
So.
So we need to decide on when we're going to carry this to, Mr. Fox.
Time and place.
Yes.
Let's get it moved.
So next month, we're already booked. We only have one meeting left for the year, which is December 13. And it's already taken up. So the next meeting is not till January. But January is our executive session, and we already have an application scheduled, I believe, for January 10th already.
So the organization, so January 24th would be the next meeting?
So the next meeting will be the 24th of January.
And that's probably going to be a waiver meeting.
I would say yes.
Sounds like it.
Yes.
Sounds like it. And I would think the council would do something between now and then on your easements. I'm thinking.
I think the law is out of my court.
You're going to have to make sure you have to follow the law.
I don't know what Fred said today.
No, no, you got to follow the law.
I'm pretty sure it's out of my court.
No, you got to follow. You know, Asbury.
I don't get involved with the city. I'm just the lowly volunteer on the zoning board.
I'm just a dumb lawyer.
So I'll make a motion to carry.
124?
Oh, and we're going to need an extension of time if we go to the second.
Granted. If you want to give me in writing, I'm happy to sign.
Okay. There you go, Mr. Surfico. I'll make a motion to carry 1201 First Avenue to January 24, 2023. Oh, my God, that sounds old.
I'll second.
Without notice.
And I'll second.
Okay. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz?
Yes.
John Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.